Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for Wasika Public Schools Board of Education. Today is Thursday, January 5th, 2023. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the Central Building, second floor conference room. This is our annual organizational meeting and you can find the agenda on our website under the School Board tab. We will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we'll begin with welcoming our new and returning members. So returning members are Dave Dunn and Charlie Preve and new members are Theron Krueger and Alyssa Bowers who can't be here tonight, but she'll be at our next meeting. So to officially welcome them, we will be doing the oath of office. I'll have you guys rise in a minute, but I have a whole, I gotta read this whole big section up here first and you have a copy.
Yep.
There it is, yeah. Alright, so it is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. So if the three of you would please rise. So repeat after me. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
I hereby publicly affirm.
I hereby publicly affirm.
My commitment to the oath of office.
My commitment to the oath of office.
I swear or affirm.
I swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of independent school district number 829.
Of independent school district number 829.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, and we'll all have to sign that at some point tonight too, so. Alright, well, moving on then, if I can get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Move on then to the organization of school board. This begins with the election of officers and just, just to point on their, item A, we just put on two policies that kind of relate to this process and to being a member of the school or director of the school board. So those are policies 202 and 209. So if you hadn't had a chance to read through them, I recommend it and of course the public is welcome to view those as well on our website. So election of officers. The duties of officers, officer positions are described in policy 202. These are office of chair, vice chair, clerk, and treasurer. Nominations and votes are part of the open meeting and a secret vote is not allowable. The acting chair asks for nominations. Any board member may nominate any other board member and nominations do not require a second. Self-nominations are also allowed. Board members may choose to accept or decline a nomination. If no other nominations are immediately received, the acting chair should pause and repeat the call for nominations. The acting chair will pause again and repeat the nominations, call for nominations a third time to ensure that any board member wishing to nominate has ample opportunity to do so. After the third call for nominations, if no other nominations are forthcoming, the acting chair will close the nominations for office. However, a motion to reopen nominations can be adopted on a majority vote. If only one board member is nominated for a position, the chair can declare that candidate elected by acclamation. If two or more members are nominated for an office, we will conduct a vote by a show of hands for each candidate. Candidates can make a short statement if they want about their suitability for the officer position to which they are nominated and candidates with the majority of votes would then be elected. So everything's clear? Okay. So we'll begin with the office of chair. So I've been chair for the last several years. The chair presides at all meetings of the school board, countersigns all orders upon the treasurer for claims allowed by the school board, represents the school board in all actions, and performs all duties a chair usually performs. And the chair also meets with the superintendent to set our meeting agendas. So nominations are now in order for the office of chair.
I would like to nominate Julie Anderson to be a chair.
Okay, Julie Anderson has been nominated. I accept the nomination. Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? Alright, if there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of chair are closed. Since Julie Anderson is the only candidate nominated for the office of chair, I hereby declare that she's elected by acclamation and directed this be recorded in the minutes. So, thank you all. We'll move on then to the office of vice chair. This position is currently open, well, all the positions are open. The position of vice chair is an optional position, but with Wasika Public Schools, our school board has chosen to include this position and it's been whenever officer positions for ever, I don't know. The vice chair shall perform the duties of the chair in the event of the chair's temporary absence. So nominations are now in order for the office of vice chair.
I'll make a motion for Adita Mansfield to be the vice chair.
Adita, do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I accept this.
Okay. Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. So since Adita Mansfield is the only candidate nominated for the office of vice chair, I hereby declare that she is elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. Welcome to the office of vice chair, Adita. Next is office of clerk. The clerk performs a number of duties assisted by the district office personnel. Most notably, the clerk signs contracts. Nominations are now in order for the office of clerk.
I'll make a motion for Dave Dunn to, for the office of clerk.
Alright, Dave Dunn has been nominated. Do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Are there any further nominations for the office of clerk? Are there any further nominations for the office of clerk? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of clerk are closed. Since Dave Dunn is the only candidate nominated for the office of clerk, I hereby declare that he is elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. Congratulations, Dave. And Caitlin doesn't have to get a new stamp, so. Just kidding. We will then continue with nominations for office of treasurer. The treasurer performs a number of duties that are assisted by the district office personnel. The treasurer also serves on the finance committee. So nominations are now in order for the office of treasurer.
I'll make a motion that Grant Sheffert for the office of treasurer.
Okay. Grant, you have been nominated. Do you accept this nomination?
I accept.
Okay. Are there any further nominations for the office of treasurer? Are there any further nominations for the office of treasurer? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of treasurer are closed. Since Grant Sheffert is the only candidate nominated for the office of treasurer, I hereby declare that he has been elected by acclamation and direct that this be recorded in the minutes. Alright, well, that was painless, so. It didn't take us four days, so. Alright, well, thank you all for being willing to serve as an officer, in an officer position. Moving on then to establishing meeting dates and times and location for the calendar year 2023. Caitlin did provide a tentative schedule and for the most part, this continues our current meeting rotation. So the first and third Thursdays of every month and we meet at 5:30 PM except for our truth and taxation meeting and we meet here in the second floor conference room of Central Building. And I believe the only change is October?
October 26th.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have any conflict with 4th of July or anything this year, so. So if anyone would like to make a motion to accept the proposed meeting dates, times?
I make a motion to accept the proposed meeting scheduled time for 2023 school year.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion?
And this is approving all the board meetings, however, committee meetings is kind of decided.
Correct. This is for the official business, work sessions and business meetings?
Yes.
We did leave July 6th on there. On occasion, we will, we will cancel that work session because of the holiday or and or whatever people have going on, depending what we have going on. As we enter into the summer, we can make that decision.
Yes.
In June.
Yep. As long as we give enough notice to the public, we can make changes.
We're gonna have it on the schedule for all of our calendars and then we'll adjust as we need to, as opposed to trying to add it in later.
Yep. And, and also, I mean, this does include the committee meeting schedule, but committee, committees, once they're formed, if changes need to be made, they can be made. So this is just where we post meeting schedules and so that can get changed. So, does that make sense for everyone? Okay. Alright, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimous. So those are established meetings for 2023. Moving on then to the business of school business committees. So Caitlin had provided who served on committees in 2022 and then I emailed everyone last week about potentially picking your top four and we'll kind of start from there. At the end of all of this, everyone should end up with four to five committees, but it's okay if you end up with three or if you, you know, however it all shakes out is, is fine. And I think, I believe I said I would start with the treasurer since you are automatically on the finance committee. So Grant, if you want to start us off.
Great. How about finance committee?
Right.
I also, I, I'm, when I look through them, I, my list included the ones that, some of that I'm currently on because I'm.
That's fine, yeah.
Like in that. The legislative committee I'm interested in.
Okay.
As well as the district accountability advisory committee. And for a fourth one, I would probably put the district personnel.
Okay.
Policy is good, but I've been on that two years now and somebody else can.
Okay. Alright, so we'll start with that and see where we go. So, Adita, do you have some choices?
Yes, I would like to stay on facility committee, maybe superintendent, community ed, but if somebody would like to take it, please let me know. And I would like to try policy. This is four. If there's then extra, I can take extra.
What was your first one, Adita?
Facility.
Yep, so.
Facility.
So facility, superintendent eval, community ed, and policy. Okay. Dave?
Actually, give her a second.
Oh, yeah. And again, these can all be changed, so we can add, yeah.
Well, I forgot to say that I would give up the PGND and DAAC DAC.
That is fine.
And negotiations too. But like I said, I can take them. Just somebody would like to try.
Well, it's, it's kind of like my email, like, let's just start with four and then we'll kind of go from there and we'll see how it all shakes out, who's, who's fighting over committees, see which ones are popular. That, that evaluation committee is the most popular, I'm sure, but.
Distressful committee, I tell you.
Alright, you caught up, Caitlin. I'm sorry about that. I do, I.
No worries.
Dave?
Um, facilities. Personnel. I haven't been on the finance committee yet, so finance. And probably would like to stay on the district accountability advisory committee.
Alright, Theron, do you have some?
Yeah, I'd like to do the facilities if that's open.
Okay.
And then I think there's a couple of recommendations to get involved with. A couple of them, I think I'm gonna pick policy out of one of them.
Okay.
And then I think I'd look into helping out with that advisory maybe.
Sure.
If you said that you wanted to back out of that, I'd be available to jump in. Start with that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Charlie?
Well, I've served in the hockey, been on the hockey committee. I'll stay on that.
Okay.
Negotiations. Policy. And what else do you need?
Do you have one other one you wanna?
Well, I'm done. Put me, just give me one. I don't care.
Insurance and safety.
Okay.
Alright.
Can I have Charlie repeat as well?
Yes.
I got negotiations, arena board, insurance and safety, and policy.
Okay. So mine, let me see here. Can you, can you scroll down? Alright, so I would like personnel. Legislative. And negotiations. And. I'm open to others, but I would do the, the PGND one. Where's that one at? Just for something different. Alright, and then Alyssa had said she was interested in facilities, which, just go ahead and add a fourth under there and we can. Or just.
I got, I have initials of it right here.
Yes. And then, so she had said facilities. She had also said community ed she'd be interested in, so we can talk about that, Adita. And then, and she only gave me those two, but since Theron, you picked policy, right?
I did, yes.
Okay. Cause we were thinking that one of, if one of you did policy, we probably would put the other one of you on finance. So let's do Alyssa on finance. And then, why don't you put Alyssa on insurance and safety for now, too? Okay. Can you make it smaller so we can see the whole thing, even though I don't feel to read it? Cause that was everyone, right? Okay.
I think that's close. There's a few holes there.
Yes.
I'll do, I'll do legislative. If you want to put me on legislative one, I'll, I'll do that again.
Alright, and then the only ones I think that were, that we had extra was on facilities. We now have four people interested in facilities, which is understandable. That's, there's a lot of stuff going on with that one. And then two people interested in community ed. You had said community ed. Awesome. But.
I can do, try insurance and safety. That's something new.
Okay. Would you mind if?
Or negotiations or something? I don't know.
Would you mind if, if, well, I want to make sure I give Alyssa something that she wanted. One of the two.
Well, I, and if Adita and I back out of that community ed, right, that's the CE advisory?
Yes.
If we both back out of it, I just gotta look at, you know, like we said, you don't want to stack something that's every month.
Right, yeah.
So if I can get something that's, you know, down on minimal meetings, I can, I can give that up if, if Adita's going to as well, so.
Would you be okay picking something, or, cause if, if you pick something besides community ed, is that alright?
No, I said, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's put Alyssa in community ed. That'd be good.
Yeah, and Alyssa can get something she asked for.
Yep. And then.
Insurance and safety is quarterly.
Yeah.
Not every month.
You can do that. I can do negotiations.
Okay, I can go.
Are there any plans for negotiations this year?
Uh, not until the late summer.
Okay. Put me out on negotiations, yes, please.
Alright, and I can stay on the superintendent evaluation committee. That's fine.
Can we take another one?
Yes.
I'd be willing to do the super intense evaluation.
Okay.
If nobody else is wanting that.
Yep.
To fill it out.
Is that one monthly?
It is, yeah. Yep. And then are you on, are you already on the DAC one?
Yeah.
Who else is on the?
The district accountable?
Yeah.
Dave and Grant.
Oh, okay. That one's like two to three times a year.
Yeah.
So it'd be.
Yeah, three, probably. Three.
Two, three.
Well, how many do we have? So.
Yeah, Millie, yeah.
We want the policy. We are, based on my notes, we are full, except we have one extra for facilities right now.
I see one.
Oh, we have one extra for facilities now?
So who, who do you have on DAC?
Who did you take off, facilities?
Oh, no one.
No one, so those are the.
Yeah, well, it had Alyssa on, oh, yeah, she was the extra, but then we decided to take Alyssa off and get her community ed.
Very good.
So, yes. So.
And per my notes, we're full here.
Policy review, we are missing one.
Do you need somebody for superintendent evaluation?
I got Charlie at the third one, policy.
Okay. Who's the third you have for policies? I have their policy.
I've got Charlie in my notes.
Oh, you put me on DAC, okay.
I think we did.
Is that okay?
And how many, cause, well, does that, how many does that give you? Does that give you four?
For me, it gives me one, two, three, four.
Okay.
And that would be insurance and safety, which is quarterly.
Yep.
Uh, policy review, how often is that one?
That one's monthly.
Okay, yeah. Yep. So then, uh, district accountability.
Yep.
And that's how often?
Two to three times a year.
Two to three times, okay. And the facilities?
Okay. And the facilities is more as needed, although this year might be a little bit more needed.
Yeah, we've, we've been getting in a monthly routine recently, so those are what we should probably plan on.
Yeah. So that's four for you. How many does Alyssa have? I don't, I don't want to give you guys more than four for your, your first year.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't bite on that.
Yeah.
And is this a yearly thing that we do?
Yes, every year.
Not per term, alright.
No.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, this, well, this organizational meeting is every single year. We can change everything, or we can change everything every year. So Alyssa has, let me see.
I've got her as three.
She has three, okay. Then what's, what's still open?
Nothing. Oh, there's a superintendent.
Superintendent.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you put her on that? Would that be alright?
Dave, you okay not being on that then?
Charlie, you have like six. Is that okay?
Or does, Charlie has six?
I have five.
Charlie has one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, Charlie has five. What's underneath the continuing education committee? Oh, that's personnel. Who's, what's all? So it's, so it's up to you. So Dave, if you want to be on the evaluation committee, that's fine, or we can put Alyssa on it. So either way.
I mean, I've got time, probably more time than a lot of, a lot of us have, so. But, I mean, I'm willing to do it if, if it's okay.
Which ones does Alyssa have?
No, I do want that too. You know, that'd give me six, but that one doesn't meet that often.
Alyssa has insurance and safety, community ed advisory council, and finance committee.
Okay. I think, let's give that one, I would say Alyssa. Although, we can talk to her and if that's too much, we could give it to you, so.
That's fine. Cause I've got four, so.
Yes. But that gives, I think that gives everyone at least four, right? And then a couple of us have five, is that correct?
I think I'm, who's on the negotiating chair?
Yeah, Adita, Charlie, and myself.
Got it.
We're the power team on that.
Repeat team.
Alright, well, this, we can start, I mean, if something changes, if someone needs to shuffle during the middle of the year, we can shuffle. It's not the end of the world. So, if we need to transfer things, but. And even though these meet monthly, life happens. If something, if there's a reason, it's, it's just like board meetings, try to make 90% of them, you know, if you can't make 100%, that's understandable, so.
Yeah, and so for, as I mentioned, the update yesterday, so next week, policy would be scheduled for Monday afternoon and finance will be scheduled for Thursday afternoon. I'll send out notes to the, those committees tomorrow morning just to see if the time we have on the calendar works. If not, we'll find another time and we'll reset those committee times as we go.
Well, and the good thing is, there's no, those are all different people, so they wouldn't have two meetings in a week, so that's actually good.
Right, finance is gonna be virtual for those of us who are up at the.
Oh, yeah.
Conference and get that from there and.
Okay. Alright, does this look good to everyone? Alright, can I get a motion then to approve the committee assignments?
I'll make a motion that we approve the committee assignments as.
Selected.
We did them.
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any further discussion? And again, if, if for anyone, if, if something is too much, we can make changes. It's not the end of the world, so. Alright, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimous. Alright, moving on then to designating our official newspaper. And Eric, if you could kind of explain the, the process for this one?
I will. We, so, much like you'll see for the rest of the meeting here, the district is required to designate some official service providers for things such as banking, newspaper publications, attorneys that we have to identify as our, that's where we're going to print our official documents that we need to, are required to publish by statute for the, for the newspaper piece. It doesn't mean that we don't utilize all of our media providers in town. Same thing with the attorneys. It's not that we, we don't use other attorneys when we need to for specializations, but we do need to designate as we see a fit now. The advantage that we have this year that we haven't had in recent years in Wasika is two newspapers to be able to support us in that way. So we did ask both of our local providers, Eli, thank you for being here this evening as well, to provide us for what they were able to give us for, for rates based on what they currently are finding for their needs. What you'll see up there is the proposed rates that we were, we were presented. Both papers are relatively similar in number of unique readers in terms of their readership and circulation. The County News has a little bit more established online presence at this time. However, we all know the county pioneer is just getting going and I anticipate that will be, you know, part of the ongoing process for them. So, so really what it comes down to for us at this point is there's a difference in what our quoted price is right now. So I would recommend that for, again, as we talked about earlier in our meeting, this is just for the calendar year of 2023, we do designate the Wasika County News as that, as that official newspaper. Of course, knowing we use both of our, both of our media partners as we need to. And then we revisit that year over year.
Okay. Do you think I want to make a motion or we can have discussion before motion too, so?
Well, I move we call the Wasika County News as our official newspaper. Well, I move we call the Wasika County News as our official newspaper.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion?
I just would like to say that I prefer Wasika County Pioneer for the content that they provide to the public.
I, I really appreciate that we have. Choices in a, in a local newspaper, I think, and I really enjoyed the Pioneer, and I subscribe to both, and it's hard to, currently, dollars wise, it makes, I mean, it makes sense, but I look forward to seeing the Pioneer continue to grow, and maybe we can make a change in the future, so, yeah.
I'm, I'm just hoping that no matter what we decide tonight, maybe at some point down the road, we can alternate. You know, have one newspaper one year, and the other one the next year, and they kind of know what's coming, and, and we do too, so.
And it's a twelve month decision, it's not a multi-year thing, so.
And I have no reason, for the services we've been receiving, no reason to lean one way versus the other, other than right now, just the straight dollars. And Elizabeth, about how many times a year does that come into something that we actually have to utilize this process for?
Oh, just one second.
We're not hearing you right now, so. Alright, put her on the spot, and then we don't have a.
I feel like I just heard.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Alright, okay, sorry about that. Um, so we do have our annual publication in November for our budget. Um, if there's any type of question that we need to call for our voters, that would be a requirement, monthly posting our minutes, that is also a requirement. Um, when it comes to publications like job postings, we usually use all forms of media. Um, so we definitely do try to do our due diligence in trying to circulate, but again, there are certain requirements that we have from the state of Minnesota that we do have to have an official newspaper for.
Alright, well, I mean, I look forward to seeing both papers grow, I hope. I think the competition is good, and I think it's good for the, for our district, for sure, but other than that, we have a first and a second, we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion?
I'm just going to say that I'm going to abstain from the vote, because if you don't already, my wife does some writing for the Pioneer, and I, I just feel like if I voted, it'd be a conflict of interest, so. I will abstain.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Alright, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries, five for yay, and one abstain. Alright, moving on then to designating our depositories. Uh, the present arrangement is Keen Bank for payroll and trust fund scholarships, Midwest for all disbursements except payroll, MSD, LEF, disbursements regarding building bond facility projects. Um, and then um. Keen, Midwest, United Prairie, Wells Fargo, MSD, they can all bid on investments, and then the administration is recommending the board designate Keen Bank, Midwest, United Prairie Bank, Wells Fargo, and MSB Liquid Asset Funds as official depositories for the calendar year 2023. So, does anyone want to make a motion supporting this?
I'll make, should the motion include listing them off? I'll make a motion, we designate the depositories as presented in the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you, first and a second, any other discussion? So basically, nothing's changed from last year to this year, right?
Correct.
Alright, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to our designation of school attorney. Uh, the school district amends designating Patton-Hover-Sinenberg as our school attorney for the calendar year 2023. The district reserves the right to consult with other attorneys for specialty reasons, depending on what that specialty reason might be. Can I get someone, does anyone want to make a motion in support of this?
I'll make a motion, we designate Patton-Hover-Sinenberg as the school attorney for the calendar year.
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next item is establishing our board member per diem and other allowance. Currently, it's a hundred dollars per meeting for directors, a hundred twenty-five for vice chair, treasurer, and clerk, and a hundred fifty for chairman, and then fifty for committee, for each committee meeting. Um, school board members also receive a family activity pass. Um, and just so everyone knows, Mr. Husband did his due diligence before this meeting, and did a little research, and we're comparable to other districts, but every district does it a little differently, but it's, we're comparable, so.
Yeah, they're a little bit hard to compare at first glance, because some districts will just say, here's your flat fee of twenty-five hundred or thirty-five hundred, versus calling it out by meeting or anything like that. But I do appreciate the way we call it out, because it does recognize the commitment that you all put in for committee meetings and various meetings. And it's a couple of things extra that we have to tally, but it does, it does come out to be the rate that's very close to our neighboring districts, some districts bigger than us. We have not changed it since I've been the superintendent, so that's something to consider for the board, but we are competitive where we are at this point, as far as just being in line with everybody else near us.
Yeah, it's been unchanged as long as I've been on the board, but as long as it's compared, comparative out of the districts. I don't know why we would. Change anything, but. Does anyone have any other comments before we make a motion? Alright, is anyone prepared to make a motion in support of our, establishing our board member per diem and other allowance?
I make a motion to establish board member per diem and other allowance. To be. Accepted?
As presented, yeah.
As presented.
Yeah.
Second.
You could, you're so close.
We're good. If you want a second before Dave, you got to be quick.
First and a second, any further discussion? And Darren, just so you, just so you know, in June and in December, we fill out the sheet to save what meetings we've been to, so. So it's, yeah, it's twice a year, we, that's how it's worked out, so. Um, and your family activity pass, make sure you get that, because that's nice, so. Alright, there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Alright, last item for organization of school board for this meeting is establishing our payment of claims schedule. Um, so this is, every month, a particular board member is tasked with just reviewing our claims a little more closely. All board members have access to the claims, and so everyone is encouraged to review it every month. At one board member's job is to take a look at it a little bit more closely. Grant suggested an alternative to the way that we've been doing it for a long time, so generally, every, we just switch off every month, and so every seventh month, it'd be your turn again, or eighth month, however that would, that would work out. So this, this is what it would look like for 2023, if we went with, and 2024, if we just did, switched it every, every board member every month. Um, but Grant recommended, what if we did, because over a. Two-year period, you would do it three times, basically, or. So he suggested, what if we did it three months in a row? Because then you would know, you'd kind of understand what you're doing each month a little bit better, versus if you, every seven months, you kind of got to remind yourself, what am I looking at again? So this would be an example of how we could start this. So it would still be a two, a two-year cycle, but instead of doing it every seven months, it'd be three months in a row, and then you're kind of done for two years. So Eric and I talked, we thought we would start with the treasurer, since also it was Grant's idea, no, that was just a coincidence, but. And since two years is twenty-four months, then it would cycle back to the treasurer. So we would just, we would start with Grant, and then just go down the list of board members, so.
Yeah, and if we opted to go this direction, we thought maybe at the beginning of your ninety-day opportunity, then maybe you want to sit down with Elizabeth for half an hour and talk through it a little bit more detail, so you kind of know what you're looking at. And again, every board member is going to be making, is going to be voting on this each month, so your, your responsibility is still to review it every month, but that deep dive over that three-month opportunity to really get a, get a handle into how things operate from a cash flow basis might be beneficial as opposed to bouncing every month. I hadn't thought of that, it's really, that was a really good idea.
And maybe see patterns, or like, oh yeah, that's a monthly, or no, that's only once a quarter, or once a year.
Well, and, like, you only do it every seven or eight months, but I still probably call Elizabeth almost every time, or I send a bunch of questions anyway, and. And it's, so this, this might be a better way to get a good handle on what. The finances of the school district, which are not simple, so. But, so I mean, if someone wants to, we can, we can keep talking, or if someone wants to make a motion in favor of option A or option B. So option A is a traditional continuing, or switching off every month. Option B is changing to a three-month cycle.
Well, of course, it was my idea, but I'll make a motion for option B for the repeating three months, unless there's concern with that, but I'll make that motion.
Second.
Alright, we have a first and a second, any further discussion, so. And obviously, after two years, or, well, even next year, we could change it. So if this is every year, we can change what we want to do, so. Alright, if there's no further discussion, I will then call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimous.
I suppose one clerical item on that.
We'll assign the names to the numbers now here.
Yeah, and we can, after you, we can go to me, I mean, since I was due to be up here soon anyway, so. We'll just go through the list. Kate Lincoln just put, she'll just plug names in and then send it out to us. And then she'll remind us when it's our turn coming up. Grant, thank you for pushing off my turn for. Since I would have been next month, so. Alright, so that is the end of our organization for this meeting. We, we will do some organizational items, usually it's, what is it, June?
July.
June, July, so it just works out timing-wise in the calendar year, but for the most part, this is the end of our organization for this year. Uh, moving on then to recognition of visitors, this is our open forum time. The Wasika School Board invites public comment. Does anyone wish to speak publicly right now? And I assume we didn't receive any emails? Okay, anyone watching at home, you're welcome to send an email to wasikadistrict@gmail.com, and we will read it at a future meeting. Um, you're also, at any time, welcome to contact any board member with a concern, and we will do our best to address that. Moving on then to information items, and with a superintendent report to start off our new year.
Yeah, thank you, I just have a few, a few items to kind of welcome us back. So first of all, welcome back from the winter break that ended up being an extended winter break for some of us at home, which was certainly challenging, you know, anytime we have weather like we've had, it causes our families, it causes our staff to have to adjust their schedules and scramble, and so we appreciate everyone, their flexibility working through that with us. Hopefully, the weather will be kinder now for us the next several weeks. But we, we are working through it, I think we, we've demonstrated that we want to have kids here whenever we possibly can, and we're going to continue to work through that. Our transportation providers have been. Very collaborative in terms of working through where we can try to get to. Hopefully, we can get to almost all of our kids every day. Every once in a while, there'll be a road that just we can't get to, and of course, the whole district can't not have school, but we have to then contact those families and say, how's that going to go for you? So, anyway, working through that, but hopefully, winter break was, was a nice, where everybody got a chance to relax and getting back to it. I know that, that our teachers were excited to see kids, and all of our staff, particularly for all day today, but yesterday, when I was in buildings, they were, they were happy to see our students back, so we're excited about that. Also, this week, the legislative session is getting underway, with, with some heavy debates right now with regards to, we'll see who the leadership ends up being on either side of the, of the, of the aisle there, but committees have been assigned, and we're starting to see how they're going to handle their business this spring. The legislative committee had the opportunity to meet with Senator Jocinski here just earlier this afternoon via Zoom to hear about some of his thoughts with regards to what's happening in the session, very much in line with our, with our platform in terms of district, meaning that we really are hoping to see those dollars being general fund dollars for school districts and not earmarked in special areas that rural Minnesota might not be able to access as much as the metro districts. So we appreciate his leadership and his work in the, in the Senate, they'll represent us for that. Coming up at the end of this month, as we get back in the routine, we'll be doing a lot of our mid-year assessments, and so you can expect the end of January and beginning of February. Uh, February work session is probably the target, to do some mid-year reviews of our vision cards, to see how we're doing on some of the progress that we set for this school year, academically, operationally, and with professional development, how we're doing with our, our student progress. So those vision cards continue to be a positive thing, to keep us moving forward with, with goals being set as we move into the next, the next year. We'll use those this spring then to help develop our plan as we launch into the next school year, which really is a good chunk of work about developing the next strategic plan, 2024 to 29, moving forward with the next five-year plan. Along with that also, it's January, which means Elizabeth finally gets to put away, last fiscal year, we get to open up the next one. And so we started thinking now about, uh, next fall, started thinking about what goes on next school year. So the committees that you'll all be taking part of in January and February, we'll start hearing about our plans for next school year in terms of staffing and budget-wise, and, and how things are going to be looking for the next year. There won't be any surprises based on anything that we've talked about as a board thus far, but now I've started putting some of those things in action, particularly financially, here in the next several months to prepare for the next school year. And then, the last thing that I have for us is just, thank you. It doesn't work for everybody, it's a hard thing to get to, but for those of us who are able to get up to the MSBA conference next week, that's always a positive opportunity to meet other individuals who are doing the same work we're doing. Many of, many of those things are also recorded, and you have access to at other times. Life just doesn't allow it, I think last year, I think six board members were planning on going, and ended up, I think me and Scott were hanging out when it actually happened on the day because of just the way that life happens. So if you can't make it that time, it's not something you should feel like you're not obligated to do that, but if it works for you, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody, and it is really some good sessions that are going on that way for everything. So that's what I have for tonight, relatively brief, just as we welcome back to 2023.
Thank you. And we have no action items for tonight, so I will save all those for our next meeting, which is Thursday, January nineteenth. And of course, yeah, the, the leadership conference is next week, so I'm going, Grant is going, Charlie and Alyssa, I believe, are going. So, so we'll come back and share at our board member reports some of the stuff that, that we learned at in session, so.